Good evening. The hour having arrived and decorum being present, I declare this January 29th meeting of the Norwood Board of Selectment officially in session. We will begin tonight's meeting as we always do with the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer or reflection. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded by Norwood Community Media. We have four appointments tonight. The first at seven o'clock is Director of Public Works and Engineering, Mark Ryan. At 7:15, we'll be meeting with James Collins of the Municipal Light Department. At 7:30, we have a public hearing with EMC Restaurant, Inc. And at eight o'clock, we will be meeting with the Budget Balancing Committee chaired by Mr. Alan Slater. Let's see. So we'll start first with Mr. Ryan, who is seated with his props. So, Mr. Ryan, the floor is yours and welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. You have my monthly report in front of you unless there's any questions. I would like to give a short demonstration that will help the town going forward in its budget balancing this year, next year, and years to come if I may.
One question on Laurel Road.
Yes.
Where are we on that?
So the drainage improvements were done, completed last week. And late spring, early summer, we'll have to shape up the road a little bit with some paving, but the bulk of the work has been done.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Howard?
Thank you. Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Howard.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm going to ask you a question. Upland Road, where the storm drain is, does water accumulate there? Why?
Well, that part of the roadway is state highway, and we've been calling the state to get that repaired. We finally got them out there after quite a few calls. They came out there. We assisted them in determining what the problem is. There's a pipe there that's broken, so the state is putting together the necessary forces to repair that pipe and make that puddle go away.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Howard, Mr. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Ryan, thank you to your department for preparing the proposed ramp for the handicap in regard to the Baltzville Ball Field.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Mr. Bishop?
Mr. Ryan, I know it's a state highway, that section of that puddle we're talking about that accumulates in the heavy rains. I hope the state understands that if that collects a lot of ice in the wintertime and there's an accident, it's going to be on them. It's not going to be on us.
They're very well aware of that. It's a good point, but every time it happens, we make sure they're aware of it just to...
It's a matter of public safety.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Mr. Donahue?
And you put those, some of the Public Works Department puts those orange cones around here.
That's correct.
But that's terrible that that's letting go that long.
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. All right. Very good. And, Mr. Ryan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a couple of months back, I was in front of the board and talking about something very important in our trash and recycling program, and that's recycling right. And we did a presentation that's on the DPW website that people can watch to learn how to properly recycle, doing it properly, and minimize contamination. And one of the other things we talk about, when we talk about reducing our budget for trash and recycling, is reducing how much we put in our trash recycle cards. Because ultimately, if it's trash or recycling, we're paying a tonnage fee to get rid of that. So what I've just handed out to you is what we call Trash and Recycling Reduction Tip Number One, which has eight easy ways for us to all participate in reducing how much we throw away. And these are very simple things. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on all eight here, but it's on our website, and we're going to be talking with the general manager about ultimately sending that out, and the mail is on the light bills or water bills. And we'll also have those around Town Hall, at the library, and at the senior center. But one of the eight ways of reducing what we throw away is food. Each year, we throw away, Town and Norwood as a whole, is 8,600 tons of trash and recycling. And when you break that down, it's around 2,000 pounds per household. Of course, you know, a single person's not going to produce 2,000 pounds, and this is an average, but that's a lot of money. That's a lot of money that is put in into the trash and recycling unnecessarily. And food accounts for 20% of what goes in the trash and recycling. And that is a lot of money. All right? That's 1,100 tons per year. That equates to over $200,000 of things we're throwing away that should not be thrown away. There are other places for it. One of the places is your garbage disposal, but I think most people find it a lot easier to walk over to their trash bin and throw it away. In many communities, and Norwood is one of them, is looking ways to help people in town reduce the amount of food they throw away and educate them. So each year, we're fortunate to get grants from Mass. Department of Environmental Protection in regards to trash and recycling. And what we do with that money is education. We also look at buying products that we can sell back to the public at a reduced cost. So if you're looking to start composting at home, and we recommend people start thinking about composting at home, go to the DPW website, okay? We have a lot of information on there. This particular tumbler, if you went to buy it on the street, be $150. Because of the DEP grant, you know, Norwood residents can get it for $50, all right? That's a really nice deal. We do have another unit, the old-fashioned Beehive unit, which is $20. You come down to DPW and get those, along with, we've got some other items, Mr. Chairman, countertop pails that is benefit of DEP recycling. And in this particular one, we have three types. This is actually bamboo, all right? We have stainless steel, and we also have white ceramics. So they're very decorative. And those are $10 apiece, all right? And they have a charcoal filter, and they work very well. But we also have units that are for free, like this plastic one here. Those are for free. And also for free, when you come down here to the DPW, are these certified biodegradable bags, all right? And you'll get those for free as well when you come down. These are all made benefit of a grant. All right? So what does this all mean? So when you're at home, and you're, you know, you're just finishing up, you know, say your apple, I mean, it's so easy, you know, yeah, you could throw it in the garbage disposal, but it's easier to throw it in the trash. You know, this is very compostable. Put it in your little container in your countertop, and that fills up, you know, with other items, eggshells, nutshells, breads, grains, pasta, banana peels. You put it in your little countertop, and it fills up, all right? And these, you know, degrade, you know, very quickly, so they're very good. You put it in your compost bin, okay? You throw some other items in there. You throw your leaves in there. You throw paper in there, shredded paper. And the beauty of this unit, Mr. Chairman, is it, you can tumble, all right? And that helps, that helps stir it up. That helps mix it, all right? The other units is more static. You've got to go in there with a shovel or a pitchfork and kind of turn it, kind of labor-intensive. But this thing is really a lot easier to use, and we're getting a lot of, a lot of positive feedback on it. You know, some of the other things, I mean, it's so simple. I mean, orange peels, all right? Anything you eat can go in these, into these containers, okay? Anything compostable. You know, so you're talking all fruits and vegetables, all right? You're talking eggshells and nutshells. Tea bags, okay? Simple tea bags, all right? Once you have them, put them in your compost bin. And soil paper, so you finish up your meal, wipe your hands, get that spaghetti sauce off your chin, all right? You can just throw it in the compost. All right? That's, you know, this is a way of reducing how much we throw away and how much we pay per ton. So if you've got these couple of units, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, you have your, you're set up at home, coffee grounds. I forgot coffee grounds. Now, I'm going to throw this away with the plastic on it, but coffee grounds should never go in the trash. These are great for your compost, that you're going to make at home. And if you don't want to make compost or you want to reuse it, it's great around your plants, your acid-loving plants, like your rhododendrons, your hydrangeas, some of your pine trees. But in this case, we're going to throw it away with the bag, but that's just, I don't want to make a mess up here. So, all right, so you have this at home. Some people in an apartment, small, you know, space, they don't have the room for this. So starting next Monday, Public Works is going to have two drop-off facilities that people can come and drop off in large tumblers we have. One of them will be at the DPW, we have one line in place, and that's going to be open every day, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And it's, it's like a giant one of these. People can just pull up and throw away their compost, all right? We'll take it from there. The other place is at the landfill, open every Saturday, 8:00 to 1:30. And when they show up, Mr. Chairman, you know, there'll be a sign instructing them, you know, what is allowed, acceptable, and unacceptable. It's pretty self-explanatory. So we're just giving another avenue for people out there to, to help reduce the costs that we have in trash and recycling. You know, as I said, over $200,000 we spent on food, food disposal. That's something, those are real dollars that, you know, expecting to eliminate 100% is not reasonable, but, you know, every bit will help in our budget, and it just makes a lot of sense as far as going forward and trying to keep reducing our costs for trash and recycling. So that, Mr. Chairman, I open up any questions?
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Ryan. So, Mr. Donahue, a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Ryan, in real life, that plastic bag with the coffee grains, you wouldn't have put that in there, right?
Correct. I would not. It just would have made a mess if I took it out, but I would have dumped it in my pail with the biodegradable bags.
And if the bags run out that we got onto the grant, will they be selling those green bags in the supermarket?
Just come down to DPW. Mr. Donahue, we have an endless supply of them.
That's a good thing, an endless supply.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think your information, Mark, was wonderful, absolutely wonderful. Hopefully, people will heed it. The question I had in the interim from your last time here was mailer cardboard things, are those recyclable in the recycle bin? You know, some I call sort of accordion type and hotter type cardboard and stuff, you know, the post office and the UPS folders that they have, should we put those in the recycle bin or not?
So, you know, we're at a stage where recycling now is very picky. We talked about the contamination, and some of those mailing packages have a, quite a bit of wax coating on them. And the single-stream facilities do not like to have those.
That's my point.
So you've got to really look at it and make an educated guess, and I think Mr. Maloney said it best when I was there, is when in doubt, just throw it out.
You said that. That was very good.
No, that was my line.
Was it?
But, you know, when there's a doubt, just throw it in the trash.
No, when in doubt, throw it out. Right. That was, that was the point, because some of them do have, do have wax or whatever on it, or even plastic at times.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bishop? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mark, I know we're trying to reach a goal here, a certain percentage of people to recycle throughout the town. Where are we right now and where do we want to be?
Well, we've started this program in October 2008, and we went immediately from 14% recycling tonnages to 30%, and we've stayed at 30% ever since October 2008. So would we like to go up? Absolutely. I think the biggest benefit is reducing how much we throw away. And, you know, you're really going to get more of a budget impact by reducing how much we give to the haulers to haul away and charge us for, right? And that's where we're talking about food compost, and that's why we talk about junk mail reduction, why we talk about textile recycling. We want to reduce how much we throw away. Would we like to get up 35% recycling? Yes. Getting high on that is very hard.
Is that still true, though? I mean, given the uncertainty of the recycling budget, which is reflected in your memo here to us, and we're involved in the negotiation of waste management, how much of an advantage is it financially to recycle, you know, a pound or a ton of stuff?
Well, right now, because of the markets dictated by China, our trash disposal costs and recycling disposal costs are, actually, recycling is higher.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
But fortunately, our contract says it cannot be higher than our trash cost.
Okay.
So that's, those are one of the things, you know, Mr. Howard made sure was in the contract, but other municipalities are being, you know, affected quite a bit by paying more to get rid of recyclables than trash. But it's also the right thing to do, to a point, to try to recycle some of these items.
The, I noted in the memo, Mr. Donahue has a question. Just real quickly, we're about, you say we're about $7,400 over budget in the first six months fiscal year, is that right?
That'll be for the whole year.
Okay.
That's projected at the end of fiscal 2019.
Yeah, based on the first...
About $7,400 shy, which is not bad considering the way the market has been swinging lively. And our budget for fiscal 2020, we figured trash and recycling at the same tonnage fee, so we won't have that surprise budget shortfall at the end of this public works.
Mr. Donahue, you had a question? Or Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Ryan, when you began your remarks, you mentioned on this sheet of paper that it'll be around town and people can get to it, but for the middle-aged people who aren't computer experts are number five. That's, I think, a very important point. If you could just, or read off, say, you want to reduce your junk mail, and so you haven't got this paper, and you're not that great on computers, so how do you get to this site on the computer?
Well, you go to the Norwood Public Works website, and you just go on to trash and recycling, and there's a button right there, you know, very clear, it says junk mail reduction.
Right. And to get to the Norwood Public Works site, you can go www.norwoodma.gov/departments-publicworks/trashandrecycling.
Yes.
Okay. So that's, that's where the middle of these road computer people, that's how you get there, because it's just all the stuff that comes in the mail is getting worse and worse.
Yes, yes. The beauty of this, if you saw this online, you just could click on that link and wouldn't have to type it in.
Right. But if you don't see it online, it's a help.
Right. It's very long, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to finish up, paper towels, you talked about paper towels in the recycling bin. I could probably fill...
The compost bin, yes.
I'm sorry, compost. I could probably fill that halfway every day.
Yep.
To the point, QVC, a television station, had 40 microfiber cloths on sale for like $5 a month for easy payments and so on and so on. But I bought 40 of them. I know that sounds ridiculous, but when you finish cleaning, you can just throw them in the washing machine, wash them, dry them out, start all over again. Paper towels are going to become a major issue, too, along with water bottles and coffee cups that are half-finished, throw them in the trash. There's water. The water's going to weigh down.
Correct.
The property that are in there already, and it's going to cost more money in the long term. So simple things like buying a microfiber cloth could save an awful lot of paper towels that don't have to go into that.
And that's where you have, there's three things, Mr. Bishop, reduce, reuse, and recycle. What you just mentioned is reuse, and you're right. I mean, years ago, you weren't taking paper cloth, paper cloth, you had a, some kind of cloth that you used.
It's so much easier, but when you stop and think about it, it's such a waste.
It is. Yeah. We've become a very disposable society.
Right. Too much so.
And we've got to move back a little bit to try to, you know, be more reasonable about what we throw away and what it costs us.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
There's one more thing for me. Mr. Ryan, you did present us with some information on snow and ice year-to-date, and it looks like we've, we have not yet gone through half of the money appropriate for snow and ice, and we have a storm anticipated the next day or two, is that right?
We have some light flares, nothing of any significance, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So we've, okay, so it seems so far we're doing okay.
Same.
I know. Right. Doing okay. All right.
I don't even want to talk about it. I'm afraid I'll jinx it.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
You're right. We have a light department scheduled for 7:15. How about if we just do some new business, do a couple of theory and then bring in the data, okay? Awesome. Okay. Very good. And for you, Anne, would you just let them know that you're going to be able to go in for them and...
Yes.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll take care of some new business end while we, if you leave at 7:30. All right, new business number one, William P. O'Donnell, Norfolk County Register of Deeds, submitting information on the funds generated by the Community Preservation Act in Norwood.
Information to file, sir?
Information made and seconded. On that, I think the number for Norwood is $80,170.
Something like that. Yes, Mr. Chair.
Very good. All right. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote all in favor. Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Number two, Robert F. Sullivan, senior manager, Xfinity, submitting programming and price changes.
Information to file also?
Information to file made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote all in favor. Opposed, unanimous. Number three, craft company, Christine Healy, CEO, submitting request for one, wine and malt beverage license and dance permit for Saturday, March 23rd, to hold a county beer festival at Norwood Space Center Event Space Building Two from 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, made and seconded.
On the motion, sir?
Made and seconded. On the motion, Mr. Bishop.
I just want to make sure the police department are aware of this also.
We'll take care of that. Thank you. Thank you, Christina. Yep, she'll take care of that. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote all in favor. Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Number four, Michael Giglio, race director, submitting request to hold road race fundraiser on Saturday, May 25, at 8:30 a.m., starting at St. Timothy's. It is for a scholarship in the name of Fernando Morales.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved, made and seconded. On the motion, Mr. Howard.
Just like to say, I used to do that road race. Mike, Mike used to do, he used to dedicate that to his mom and dad, which is kind of neat. I'm sure in his head he still does. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number, thank you. Number five, Georgia Wilson, 94 Prospect Street, submitting talent bank application.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Plasko?
I took a look at this, and I'm extremely impressed that he stepped forward and interested in serving the town, just great credentials. I believe we have openings as associate members of the zoning board, and if I'm correct, make a motion that we appoint her to that position?
Second.
Do we, we have, how many are we supposed to have? We have three, I think, don't we?
Do we have, do you know that, Christina, by any chance?
Is it Murphy, EC, and Anderson?
I thought it was five.
Oh, we're supposed to have five?
Well, I'm not sure. I thought it was. I didn't, I didn't check today.
Okay.
Well, we could tell you what, I could bring it up next week after we're fine.
All right. But it's a good, I was impressed as well. Have a motion to table. Is that fair enough?
And I'll second that motion, sir.
So it's allowed five alternates?
Yes.
Okay, I'll tell you what, before we vote on this, five alternates allowed, I think we have three, I believe.
Then I wouldn't make that motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
I even seconded it.
I would second.
To, to name, to offer Georgia Wilson a position as an associate member of the Board of Appeals, right?
Correct.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Number five, Rita A. Russo, 40 Pine Street, submitting request to use the gazebo Wednesday, July 3rd, from 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. for the patriotic rosary.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number seven, car washes, Norwood High School varsity boys soccer, Saturday, June 15, from 9:00 to 3:00, and Norwood High School junior varsity boys soccer, Saturday, August 17, from 9:00 to 3:00.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion to approve, both made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Number eight, cemetery deeds for review and signature to board.
Motion.
Motion to sign.
Motion to sign, made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. And thank you. Number nine, ABBCC, submitting notification of approval of Bertucci's Restaurants AAB license transfer.
Information to file?
Second.
To file, made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote all in favor. Opposed, unanimous. Number 10, Norwood School Committee, submitting correspondence regarding override.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Plasko?
Number 10, and number, number 11, the, an additional letter received from Mr. Thornton. He already sent us one previously. Both have to do with the override issue. We'll be discussing that with the permanent building, I mean, permanent building, Town Line Budget Balancing Committee later, so will we just table those till that time?
Second.
Will we do that? Okay. Motion to table 10 and 11. All right? Anything else on the motion?
No, sir.
Hearing none, put it to a vote all in favor. Opposed, unanimous. All right, that's new business, and now additional new business. Do we want to deal with this now, Mr. Plasko, or do you want to wait?
Sure, I think we can.
Okay. Number 12, Paul Halkeotis, Director of Planning and Economic Development, submitting most[1646.41] most recent draft of the Forbes Hill Request For Proposal, the RFP. Do we have a motion, Mr. Plasko?
Well, this is basically intended to be a final, there's also attached a schedule where we would be placing this ad, in the legal advertising that we have to do, which is central register tomorrow?
Yep.
And it'll publish next week. This is just the kinda guts of what we'd be most interested in, there's some legal mumble jumbo, the Kathy Conney is taking care of for us, and making, typically called the front end of a big package that she'll be putting together for us, and also, there's a lot of attachments that are referenced here that you didn't get copies of, but it'd be three times the size you're looking at.
Okay.
Mr. Howard just made one suggestion that we maybe change the wording on page eight under housing density, but it's just a little reference to the number of units that might possibly be built, no, no major change in policy or anything that he suggests, so if a lot of work's gone into it, and I'd recommend a, a final approval by the board, we'll see if we can make a change in that area and-
What is the change?
Get this done. Mr. Howard suggested to me that it indicates that residential development is favorable consideration as units less than a hundred and fifty, and then it said, least, least is, a consider, least consideration be given to developments, proposals that include more than a hundred and fifty units. He'd like to indicate that there's a cap of a hundred and seventy-five, so I was gonna change that wording to residential development proposals that include between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and seventy-five, 'cause the others says less than a hundred and fifty, so that'll cover all units.
Okay, does the word multifamily need to be in there, by the way?
It's, it's, it does not in this case, no.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, or Mr. Howard?
Just, that, that's the one, the one item that I had, only because the committee had discussed that over and over with that amount in mind.
The one seventy-five.
Yeah, so, I make a motion that we accept it as presented to us.
Do you want, so should we add, do you wanna add that amendment in?
Yeah, well, we have, we have time to change that, 'cause that's a simple change, and, and these won't actually be picked up by anybody till next week after it's advertised.
Okay. All right, very good. So, we have a motion on the floor to, to accept this document-
Second.
-as amended by Mr. Howard, right? A made and seconded. Anything further, hearing none, put it to a vote all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed unanimous, thank you. All right, that brings us to seven thirty, and it's time for a public hearing. Let's see, do we have anybody out there to represent the, thank you, David?
No comments?
You'll have to wait, seven thirty.
Read the hearing notice.
Somebody out there? Nobody out there?
Why don't we continue with the agenda?
Read the hearing notice?
Okay, so we should at least read the hearing notice, right?
Yeah, have to open the hearing.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, so we have to read a notice. Christina, go ahead, read the notice.
Non-Norwood applications for common victory license, the selectmen will conduct a public hearing at seven thirty PM on Tuesday, January twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen, in the Harry B. Butters chambers, room thirty-four, Norwood Town Hall, for a license to operate EMC Rest Inc., DBA same old place, one hundred and eleven Lennox Street, Norwood, Mass. Board of Selectmen, Thomas F. Maloney, Chairman.
All right, thank you, Christina.
Chairman?
Mr. Plasko?
He has to be no representative for the applicant here this evening, and it's come to our attention that there's a minor, well, I know it's a minor, but a, a problem with the application itself, that the applicant's gonna try to get straightened out with other boards, so I wonder if we might continue this till, maybe on February twenty-sixth. At that time, we can reevaluate it and decide to further continue or take action.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to continue, made and seconded. Anything further on the motion? Do we, do we do public comment first before we go to table?
I suppose you could, you could check to make sure if anyone did come out for the hearing, sure?
This being a public hearing, the public is allowed to address the body, if anyone here would like to address them on Mr. Champ's application. All right, very good, we have a motion to, to continue until February twenty-sixth, made and seconded. Anything further, hearing none, put it to a vote all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. All right, thank you, let's see. The only other thing here, memorandum, then we'll bring in our Jimmy and Daryl, memorandum from Stacy Lane, RNMPA, submitting a copy of correspondence to Michelle Kutsoskis, one seventy-five Railroad Avenue Realty Trust regarding lodging house complaint for one seventy-five to one seventy-nine, Room D. Motion to file, who did you want to add, Christina, just file it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Some will.
Made and seconded, anything further?
On the, on the motion, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Bishop.
We're gonna be kept up to date on this, 'cause there is a criminal complaint being issued against these people-
Okay.
...for violation, so I just wanna make sure that we're gonna be included in the loop, and not just have it file away and disappear.
Okay. It was one seventy-five, one seventy-nine Railroad Ave, by the way, thank you, okay. All right, very good, anything further on the motion? Hearing none, put it to a vote all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed unanimous. All right, thank you. That concludes all the new business, additional new business and memoranda, so, Mr. Collins, Mr. Hanson, come on in, we appreciate your patience. We have an appointment scheduled at eight o'clock as well, so we have some time here. Good evening. All right, Mr. Collins, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have my report in front of you, the transmission project is still proceeding. Everso is doing work out on there right away, which will be impacting, actually, next week they'll be taking a brief outage, which will put us on one line, and then we're continuing, we're gonna upgrade the protection again. Getting into projects, Morgen, got their battery storage system online, they're doing testing with it. Endicott Woods, development moving along, the MBTA solar projects slowed down quite a bit, not quite ready to begin to connect it. Avalon Bay's moving quite quickly, the skating club of Boston, we had a meeting with last week, they seem to be moving right along with their plan. And in parallel with the town, you know, Munich's financial system, we're also changing over the billing system, so we're working at the light department to implement that, and that's scheduled to go online July one, go live July one, so it should go on with the financial system, so the two will be able to handshake.
Mr. Collins, does that look like that will happen?
Yes, it's going along, we haven't hit any snags in, in that at all, it's like that's the schedule.
Thank you.
They may end up shifting it, depending on what happens as they get closer, but there's no, no issues at this point.
Thank you.
One thirty-six SS Road, in the back, I have included some photos, progress photos, if you would, of the work going on down there. Basically, they've gutted the building, they have removed any of the hazardous material, mold, things like that, they cleared the trees around the intermediate building, they're doing reinforcing the structural steel to bring it up to present-day code, with earthquakes and side loading. Today, as a matter of fact, they're pouring footings for that same purpose, starting to get it to a real build mode, and things are going along very well down there. That's about all I have for the electric side, we had two storms, a few outages, mostly tree-related last week. We had a tree come down on Westover Parkway, took a feed out last Thursday, and then we had a tree come down on Rickland Road, took some services down on West Street, I think there were a couple other trees, but all in all, we really, it wasn't a dramatic impact.
What was the, the longest outage we had in that rest, over a half an hour or something?
In the recent years, you know, back in nineteen seventy-eight, maybe, we, we had a twelve-hour outage once, and that had to do-
Nineteen seventy-eight?
I think I always-
Listen.
And what happened there was the transmission line that came into town actually got knocked out, so there wasn't much we, we could do until we get that transmission line back. Normally, that one on Thursday was very quick, that was, you know, forty or fifty, you know, maybe half an hour, forty minutes, but normally they'll, they'll need one-hour range. The, the longest time is if they're off, off hours, you have to get the people in, so it takes them twenty minutes to half an hour to get here before you even get the truck going, you know?
Yeah. Okay, very good.
Anything else?
Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Collins, you talked about pouring footings to add some strength to the integrity of the structure itself, will that also help the second level that you intend to put up there, will that help support that?
It got, currently a second floor.
Right, I think you wanted to add something else up there also.
There's no extra loading going on, that, what we're adding is, in the-
Interior.
In the interior.
In the interior of the building, it's gonna be basically a duplicate of what's in the front, and, and those footings will get poured, but they, they, they're not able to pour those yet, simply because they have these lifts that are running back and forth where the welders are working up on the, on the steel?
Mm-hmm.
And they have to wait till they get that welding done before they can start digging there for the footing.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Collins.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, just a few items tonight. The customer equipment swap that we've talked about in the past, where we're changing out the legacy modems and set-top boxes, we're still at about an average of eighty devices a week, so it's, it's moved along pretty well. Right now, the completion date is probably late summer, early fall, I like to step that up a little bit, just, just because we've got the equipment in stock now, I like to get them out to our customers as quickly as possible, so if we can get that up, you know, closer to a hundred devices a week, I'd be, I'd be much happier, and hopefully, when I come back next month, I can report that we're, we have stepped that up. Last week, I, I went through a bunch of things that we're looking at in the future, and one of those are the, the capacity of our outside plant, this is how we get it from, you know, our building up the street, out to all of our customers. The capacity of that plant is nearing capacity, or it's, it's almost at capacity, we have a few more years before we're not gonna be able to push any more stuff down to our customers, and as you know, the demand is always going up for more and more internet. So, we're gonna be looking at waste upgraded, and really, there's, there's two paths that we can take, one is a newer version of what we have now, which is fiber to the neighborhood, and then coaxial cable to the customer. There's upgrades to that, which opens up that pipe a bit, but there's also fiber to the home, and that puts, that brings fiber right to the house, right between our, our building, right to the customer's house, and then there'll be some copper within the house, but that pushes that, that big pipe closer and closer to the house, and to the actual equipment. Some of the new equipment even has fiber going right into it, see routers and modems and stuff like that, so I think that's probably the, the biggest possible pipe in today's technology that we, that we can push out there. Over the next six to eight weeks, we hope to have some test equipment in, up at two oh six Central Street, so we can start testing some of this fiber-to-the-home equipment. We're also gonna be testing the, you know, the conventional equipment as well, but right now, one of the manufacturers of the fiber-to-the-home equipment has stepped up, and they're gonna, you know, offer us for free to, to test some of their equipment, so it's, it's a good, good start. And the last thing I had was on the annual food pantry promotion, you folks recall that we do this every Christmas time to help raise money for the food pantry, where we donate at least fifty dollars for any new customer who comes on during the promotion, and twenty-five dollars for any customer who upgrades. This year, we raised two thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for the pantry, we gained thirty-eight new customers and, and four upgrades, so it was a good year.
Thank you for that.
Let's see, just a couple of questions on broadband financials, Mr. Hanson, I noticed that net position of November thirty, two thousand and eighteen, versus November thirty, two thousand and seventeen, appears that we had a pretty good year. We did better, we went from four point six 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 million to five point two eight five million, and so, overall, it seems like in your memo and in your numbers, that the year ending November thirtieth, year-over-year, pretty good.
We're doing pretty good.
Yeah, okay. When we talk about bonds payable and notes payable current, is that, what's that, within one year, you know?
Get that, Jim?
It's, it's not important, we're just, I think it's like within one year.
It's all the financial statements.
Yeah. Okay, all right. And then, just, just for those, I know we've talked about this in the past, but the, one of the entries we have here is depreciation expense, can you explain what depreciation expenses in this context, because it has like four different meanings in municipal?
Yeah, in this case, it's just an expense we're taking on equipment that we bought in the past.
Okay.
You know, to capitalize something, and to take it over a life of maybe, in the broadband world, maybe ten years. On, on the electric side, we do everything, basically, three percent depreciation, so it's like a thirty-three-year life.
Okay.
In the broadband, you got more electronic equipment, you get different categories of that equipment, some of it's five-year equipment, some of it ten-year equipment, but it's just-
It's lifespan is a lot shorter.
Yeah.
Life span's shorter, so you don't expense the capital expense when you buy it, you expense the item over, over, over its life, and that's what's happening, that's what you're seeing here.
Very good, okay, thank you. Any, any other, any questions? Or you can run, Mr. Don, you have?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Collins, in the fund that you have for repairs, how much is in that fund now?
Now, we're talking light, light-
Light department.
In the light department, currently, the approximately four million dollars in the depreciation fund.
So, have you ever thought, my old question, have you ever thought about using part of it for rewiring, self-node?
Yeah, you know, that, that's one of the things we could look at, the, the money is pretty well allocated, I know it seems like an awful lot of money, but between the wires and, and the trucks we replaced, and the meters that we buy, and the streetlights we buy, and the, that, that money really doesn't last that long. When you think about the transmission project that we just did last year, that's always a ten-million-dollar project, so four million dollars really doesn't last very long. You, you need to keep a certain reserve, I mean, if we got hit with a hurricane, the likes of what happened in Tallahassee, for example, we, we'd need to bring people in to help rebuild our system, to restore it, so you'd need to have, I would think, a buffer of a few million dollars at the boot.
So, if we had started years ago, using a small amount, say like five hundred thousand dollars, and we had done two blocks, you know, or, like, if we had done a little bit of time, we'd be done by now, you know?
We have tentatively discussed when the large note for the light department is payable, that'll free up some operating money in the budget to be able to do it. From a downtown development standpoint, burying the lines itself, it would be great, it's probably a thirty-million-dollar project, so a half a million dollars a year is really not necessarily gonna get us there, but about a year after that large note falls off the down, the light department we've talked about, looking at starting to do that, I mean, it's a large costly project.
And I would think that we shouldn't start with self-node, I think that we should start right uptown where it ends now, and go right through the ward, and right, go right down Washington Street, that would be the way to do it properly, wouldn't it?
We'd have to have that engineered to make sure they, objectively, that seems to make sense, but that's something the engineers would have to tell us if it's the best place to start.
We're all getting older, time is watching us, do you think it'll happen in our lifetimes a lot?
I, I told the light department, I would like to make it happen. Again, it would be a big improvement in the infrastructure of our downtown, what we have to look at is, it's a great downtown project, it's a great community project, from a light department perspective, it's a terrible light department project, it's not a great use of light department funds, 'cause they don't really benefit by burying the lines, but from a community development standpoint, it's wonderful, so-
We have a talented group there that work there, and I bet you they would have the skill to know how to do it, you know? Thank you.
All right, Mr. Don, thank you very much, Mr. Bishop?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just to follow up on the rewiring issue, how far are we away in the future from doing wireless? Now, by wireless, I mean a unit on a telephone pole that shoots directly to your house without any wiring internally, that goes right to your modem, and so on, and so on.
You're gonna see more of that in the next five years, you know, as 5G is being pushed out the way it is, we may be able to piggyback that with, you know, some of our services, and maybe push it out closer to the customers.
Do we know how efficient that would be, is it dependable at this stage?
I think it'll be less dependable than wired, and there's, there's also a lot of problems with it, as soon as you get into RF technology, that they tend to be using the higher frequencies, the higher frequencies have trouble getting through walls and through trees, and so you'd almost need a antenna on every pole to make it as good as wired.
Do you think it would improve over the next five years, or that maybe at the end of the five-year cycle, six, seven years?
RF technology is RF, you know, it's, it's not gonna change the physics, so it's always gonna have some, some issues.
I was thinking that, 'cause maybe we could save XYZ money as far as rewiring and buying all this coaxial cable, and so on, and so on.
I think competitively, we're gonna have to offer product like that, but for, you know, for the hardcore users, they're gonna wanna-
Like a premium level?
They're gonna wanna wire, you know, for that service.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Daryl.
Mr. Bishop, anything else? All right, then, that's it, thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Have a good night.
See you next month, thank you. All right, all we really have left before we set, go with Mr. Slater and his group is Selectmen's Addenda, I'd, I'd like to hold that to the very end, Selectmen's Addenda, but managers update, is there anything for you, Mr. Bishop?
Just wondering, brief update, this past Saturday, I went to the Edward M. Kennedy Institute, and I was able to see students from the Norwood High Senior Civics Class compete in the We the People Constitution competition, and I went last year, went again And I went last year, went again this year, and enjoyed it immensely. It was a great, great event, and the kids did very good.
Our kids did well, didn't they?
They did. Four of them won a UNIN award as well, so...
Beautiful. Beautiful thing. Let's see. If that's all you... By the way, you also submitted your self-evaluation, and I want to thank you for that, Mr. Mizuko. You all have among you the form that Mr. Plasko helped prepare, so I'm wondering if the board could take Mr. Mizuko's self-evaluation and the matrix that Mr. Plasko put together for us and come back with their reflections on Mr. Mizuko's first-year performance, and we do that next week. Is that possible?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Howard.
I have confusion on that. How, what are you looking for from us? Are you looking for a number, or are you looking for good, bad, or terrible, or what?
Well, you have the, you have the...
Table.
It's in your packet, but...
Are we in grid now?
Yeah, it's an evaluation form.
Okay, cool.
And there is a spot on that form that works for written comments.
Yeah.
So there's not very much space, not very much space there, so feel free to use additional space.
Before that, I had nothing.
And when you say next week, that's turn it into you, and then it'll have to be...
Yeah, is that fair?
Yeah, then you'll have to put it all together.
Yeah.
We won't be doing that next week. We'll just be turning it into you.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Is that all right for everybody?
Yes, sir.
Can we really get him if we want?
Sure.
It's hard to be anonymous in these situations, Mr. Howard.
That's all right.
We know you're ready, Don.
All right, very good. So we've agreed to that, then, and if there's nothing else, Mizuko, I'd like to, even though a little bit early, to have our guests come in.
I think it would be a wise idea.
Thank you. All right. Budget Balancing Committee, enter inside and please. Dr. Thompson, how are you, sir?
I'm good, sir. How are you? We have some presents well worth setting up.
Thank you, sir.
Happy, Mr. Chair, I have your seat.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Same thing, right?
Yes, same thing.
All right, very good. While we're getting ready, what I propose to do here is you want to turn the floor over to Mr. Slater and his group in just a minute. The Budget Balancing Committee has been working, as Mr. Slater will tell you, since last summer on a five-year projection. I believe they have some recommendation to us of an important nature. It involves an operational override.
You need one more chair.
He'll get it. And so before we, before we turn it over there, just one thing I think we're probably going to be looking for, Mr. Slater, here on this side of the table. We're delighted you're here, by the way. Thank you all for taking time to come in. So I know it's a little later in the evening, but two words that I used in the statement last May were precision and concision, so we want to know what the budget balancing has to say about how much and what for, I guess is the best way to put it. Before we start, is there anything that any of my colleagues on this board would like to say before we get going? If not, I'll turn it right over.
At this time.
All right, very good. Mr. Slater, thank you very much, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the board for having us here today. Much appreciated. I sent you a copy of the report which summarized the work which we did. Of course, as soon as I finished the report, it turned out we had new numbers from the state for the cherry sheet, which changed some of the recommendations, but everything is to the positive, and, you know, we'll certainly demonstrate this. So you do have the report. Just like to highlight a few portions of it, and the process we went through. We began in June. We generally don't begin that early. We usually begin right after the beginning of the calendar year, you know. Typically, begin as January, but because we realized there were a number of budget concerns when we did the FY '19 budget, we decided that we really should begin early because there's, again, a number of issues that we'd have to address, and we wanted to make sure we had sufficient time to do that. So beginning in June, we met every three weeks on average. We realized pretty quickly that what we want to come up with is not a one-year solution, but look at an overall five-year plan. Five years is usually the longest period you could look at in municipal government, so we wanted to have a solution that would last a minimum of five years, and nobody would come back for anything more during that period. And Director of Finance, Tom McQuaid, provided the assumptions and a five-year spreadsheet demonstrating, you know, where the costs were going to be, you know, for the various portions of the budget, you know, the town side, the school side, as well as all the various shared costs that we have. Our intent was to come up with a plan that would stabilize the budget for five years. This would include an override stabilization fund, so in case in one year you didn't use all the money, it would go into a special fund that could be only, that could potentially be used in subsequent years if there was a little bit of a shortfall. Again, this is consistent with what other communities have done, particularly Arlington, and we thought that was a good approach. There was extensive discussions with schools, and, you know, over the years, the school department, you know, in order to meet their budget constraints, has had to reduce some of their programs. So part of what we wanted to do is not only stabilize the budget, but try to bring back some of the programs that they've lost over the years, as well as a few other items, I think Dr. Thompson will discuss a little bit afterwards. Other issues we looked at was snow and ice, whether we should put more money in for roads, and whether we'd like to have a townwide facilities department in a so, whether that was something that could be financed within the available constraints we had within the budget. Initially, when we looked at our five-year plan, we wanted to look at using free cash. But in the end, essentially to ramp down how we would use free cash, you know, start with a certain number, less number the next year, and after the five-year period, have a budget without free cash. This year was, you know, a difficult year in free cash, as you know. We probably had the lowest number of free cash that I can recall, and we made the decision relatively quickly, once we saw that number, that there's no way we can include any free cash in the budget, in a budget, you know, in a budget for FY '20. And since we took it out in FY '20, logically, we might as well keep it out, you know, in subsequent years also, and use free cash where it's supposed to be used for, you know, one-time items and certain emergencies. Another part of this which we think is critical, which is still in draft form and is being worked on by Mr. Mizuko and Superintendent Thompson, is a memorandum of understanding, which is something that general government and the school department will endorse. It's sort of like a pledge to our taxpayers that if you give us this money for this five-year period, we're not coming back. You know, we are not going to be coming back for another operational override. We will make do with these funds, and they were pledged to do that. Again, it's not a legally binding document, but it's a pledge to the taxpayers, and I think it's something that everyone will take seriously. So, you know, we met, you know, throughout the summer and the fall, beginning of December. We took a vote in December for an override of $7 million, which included money for the schools, money for the town, money for snow and ice, and money for roads. And that was a recommendation we thought we'd be going with. However, last week, the governor released his new cherry sheet, and Norwood came out very well, very favorably compared to a number of communities, particularly in the Chapter 70 school funds. I don't know, Tony, whether we have, do we have a slide showing the new override numbers?
Yep. We had a little bit of technical difficulties earlier, but we'll see if we can get that.
Okay, thank you. Bottom line...
There's something up there, Tony.
Oh, it's up there. All right, good. Okay, excellent. Thank you. Bottom line was that, you know, we received over $1 million more than what we anticipated, which was, which meant we were able to reduce that so-called override number by over $1 million, which, again, is good. I think, as you can see, the numbers here, the deficit reduction, which is to eliminate the deficit as well as stabilize that portion of the budget for five years, was $3.6 million. We do, restored our school programming, which Dr. Thompson will discuss, $1.8 million. $250,000 for additional road funds, $300,000 towards snow and ice, because as we know, we usually, at a town meeting in the spring, have to ask for more money for snow and ice. The intent is eventually to put more, enough money in the snow and ice budget that we won't have to do that. This just helps to accelerate the process. So that's a total of $5.95 million. Included in that amount is also money to have a new town, townwide facilities department. And again, I think that's certainly exciting. Next slide, if we have it, or would be, sure, whatever everybody wants to see is the cost per household. And this comes right off the state website. Just fill in the blanks. What it says is for an average household of $452,000 and some change, the value, the amount that will be coming out of this override would be $389. And again, it differs depending on the valuation of the house. This is just the money associated with the override. It doesn't include the money that would be in a typical, you know, yearly two-and-a-half increase on your taxes. So with that, you know, those are the numbers. My intent is to resubmit the report with revised numbers, but again, I think these, those were the numbers I think are more critical that people want to look for, and I turn it over to Tony and Dave as to whether they'd like to add anything.
Before we do, by the way, Mr. Slater, would you be kind enough to introduce your committee?
Oh, I will.
Because they've all come, we have, everyone's here.
That's good. Okay, to my right is Director of Finance, Tom McQuaid, Superintendent of Schools, Dave Thompson, the Chairman of the School Committee, Maev Bauthoffer, School Committee Person, Mauro Smith, from the Finance Commission, we have Ann Hailey, and from the Selectmen's Office, we have our Chairman, Mr. Maloney, Bill Plasko, and our General Manager, Tony Mizuko.
Thank you very much, Mr. Slater.
Thank you.
You've turned it over to Dr. Thompson and Mr. Mizuko, so who would like to go first?
You can go first. Sure. So I handed out to you kind of a summary of the override by the numbers for the schools and go back and refer to it, but I just wanted to spend a quick minute or two, and I won't read every single piece on here, but just to give a general description as to what those are. The Level Service Budget is basically just trying to keep what we have with a few things that should be in that budget. Basically, our supply budgets, one-time only fixed this year, we cut our supply budgets to basically almost nothing. Chromebooks, you can remember that last year, we, at Part Capital, we had Chromebooks. You need to replace those, and what happens is you buy new ones for the incoming sixth grade, the incoming ninth grade. Those Chromebooks then get refreshed and come back, come down, those are in good working order to the elementary schools. So that's the first round of that. We cut all library books out of the budget for our schools last year. There were no library books purchased for our libraries, putting that into our budget, and actually, a real snow and ice number is in that budget.
So the Level Service Budget then basically is adding back stuff that you had to take out last year, getting back to...
Not, not, not everything, but everything that should be in there, but a major piece of that.
Okay.
If you get below that, now we're looking at the restoration and targeted improvement pieces. This is that $1.8 million. One thing that we have not made a habit of doing is refreshing our curriculum in a cycle. It should be once every five or six years. You go around and you refresh your curriculum, buy new materials, that's $300,000 in that override asked for that. The last time we actually bought new curriculum materials was a Capitol Outlay Request for Math Curriculum. And the worst example is 14 years we've been waiting to refresh our ELA curriculum at the elementary level. The standards for English Language Arts have been revised twice since we last bought materials. We want to expand staffing at the high school, replace staffing at the high school that was lost, specifically looking to expand advanced placement offerings and also to develop career pathways. This is a new push from the department to create job-like experiences and learning in our high schools, so kids will come out with a general direction of what we're going to do. We have applied for a grant from the state. We did get that grant for $10,000. We're in the process of planning initially for healthcare and social assistance. Those are the first two. Partnering mainly with Norwood Hospital, and you have that, you have a partner in the community that you work with. We're lucky, you know that, and that there are a lot of businesses and other organizations that would be willing to do that with us. The $78,000 is basically to replace a foreign language teacher that was lost. That loss, in conjunction with increasing the standard for graduation called Math Core, which the state has determined is a college degree readiness standard, we have about 92%, 91% of our students actually do that, but it's not a requirement. It should be a requirement. The $81,000 is to restore cuts at the middle school. We had to reduce our library at the middle school to halftime last year and a few years before that, reduce PE, so that would be putting those back in. We need to move in a direction that is more modernized with our instruction, and that can move in the category of personalized and project-based learning, and that would be a combination of materials and training to do that, and then eventually perhaps some coaching and things along that line. And then, you know, the last bullet on that page is recognizing trends in increasing student needs. ELL students, we have 360 ELL students in our district. That's 105% increase since FY '10. Our high-need students are 44.5% of our student population, and 25% of our students are economically disadvantaged. We need to increase ELL services, ELL curriculum to meet that need. We have a sub-separate program. Sub-separate means you have a special ed program that is separate in a classroom, kids with significant needs, and we need one more teacher to split back into two. And then, you know, if you look at the Chapter 70 law that the governor is proposing, the governor has recognized the need to invest in social emotional learning and mental health, and that is going to be part of that law should it pass in '21, and we're looking at about $185,000 to bring that level up to what it should be. And then there's a couple of things for general needs there which I won't get into. So those are kind of the read and digest explanation.
Good, Doctor, thank you very much. Mr. Mizuko? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Plask.
Make a point or ask a question, make sure I'm not incorrect. This is in a snapshot saying the things the school committee would like to do with additional support through an override, but a lot of people haven't been involved, as we have, for the day-to-day, getting to this point. And I think they need to understand that if there isn't an override where you are. So correct me if I'm wrong, but in the level budget, if there is no override, those items disappear, as well as another $2.2 million in cuts from your current operations.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Plasko. You want to, Mr. Mizuko, you want to speak there, Mr. Howard?
I know.
Go ahead.
First point, if I could, if I could go to the town report. Some people say the sky is falling, and, oh, it has a terrible district. Kids don't know anything or whatever. If you look in this book on page 88, it has the test scores, the most current that we have in book form. And if you go down this, you'll see that in almost every category, we're at or higher the state average. Just a point, big point, that, you know, we're not terrible in those knowledge pools. The kids are doing pretty darn well. This year, maybe not so much. But you had said to me, Mr. Superintendent, that last year was the first year in a new format on these tests, and that kids did pretty damn good on those tests.
Yeah.
You know? And this year, not so much, why, I don't know, but that's just my point on that, than for people saying the sky is falling, you know, and that. Is, is this year much different financially for the district than last year, the year before, the year before?
Yes. Well, you have, you know, cost of living increases in there as well. We're not, I mean, the school budget has been propped up for the last five years, five or six years, with free cash. So that, you know, that isn't fixing a problem. This is putting a Band-Aid on it and kicking the can down the road. So, you know, and not that I'm upset that we did that, but, but that doesn't solve the structural deficit that we have. It's interesting that in the governor's budget, he just put out, the first thing he had on there was the inflation for this year, for next year was estimated to be 3.73% or 3.37%, excuse me.
Inflation for education costs in Commonwealth?
Right, right. So when you have that, those kinds of factors, you eventually, you know, the paths diverge. So that's where we are. Combine that with, you know, the revenue not keeping in concert with that, you know, there's not free cash to fix that problem. So we're looking, we're looking at approximately $2 million worth of cuts, and the reality is, is that we have already, for the last five or six years, already cut out a lot of the other stuff and reduced staffing, especially clerical and support staff.
If I could?
Yes.
I presume you wrote this?
Yeah.
It says increased by 36.04 FTEs district-wise since 2010.
Yep, it does.
So...
So, and if you, and if you look, 23.8 of them are paraprofessionals, which are directly in response to student needs, which have increased significantly since 2010.
I'm just saying, we did increase. In your, in your narrative that's online from last May, three different areas, you said we've decreased teachers, three different areas, you said we decreased teachers.
Right.
36.04.
Right. We have basically, right, we basically cut teachers and increased pairs.
Thank you, Mr. Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In this presentation, it was said that the memorandum of understanding will be for five years?
It will, it would, in...
Minimum.
Minimum of five years. You have for the... Minimum of five years, you have for the period of, I think, 2020 to 2024 fiscal year.
In the event that the town approves this operational override, how long would the additional charge be applied to the taxpayers' bills?
It would be a permanent charge, being an operational override.
So what will happen after five years when the memorandum of understanding expires?
I don't think, well, I don't think the memorandum, again, after five years is really the maximum term that you could, you can really look at when you deal with municipal finances. In the case of the Town of Arlington, they had an override, and they had a memorandum of understanding, which I believe, Bill, was what, three years?
It was originally for three years, starting in 2012, and it's still operating.
Right, and it's still operational, and that's what we were hoping that we can do, that we can have this, have this override money, you know, last for a period longer than five years.
But it would be coming in every year, the money would be coming in every year. So then, why would you have to have a further agreement?
Again, well, the hope is that you don't, that, you know, during that period, you know, you're going to be preparing for, you know, for year six, and the increases that you're going to have there, and take measures before that, so that we can meet our budget responsibilities without having to do an additional override.
So it may be, though, that if you couldn't, then you'd have to ask for another override.
Again, you know, that's certainly not the intention, but, you know, you can rule out the possibility.
My other, thank you. My other question is, please, in regard to the career pathways program, is that's partially in effect now?
We're in the planning stages now.
Uh-huh, and so in a case like that, it's the school committee that weighs the decision whether or not the money should be spent on upgrading the program for the elementary schools that have been revised, have, we haven't done for 14 years, and it has been done by other communities? So wouldn't it seem that our responsibility would be to assess that need first?
Well, I think you need to do both of them.
But in the event that you couldn't, wouldn't it seem that not upgrading a program for 14 years is not a good thing?
Oh, it's not a good thing, but it's one of the things to try to make budgets that have been cut out.
Years ago, when my kids started elementary school, they were using the textbook in social studies, they called it then. The book was 18 years old in elementary school. So there was a town meeting representative, her name was Emily Moses, she had no kids, she never married. I told her about it. She went right up to Mr. Savage's office, and she said, what's this, 18-year-old textbooks? You know, but it would seem that we should have taken care of that by now. That should have been taken care of, out of any money that we spent, so far.
Well, if you keep having to go backwards, you know, I wasn't here at that point in time, but if you keep putting it in the budget and cutting it out of the budget to make the bottom line, that's what happens. But you're absolutely right, we should not be going 14 years with a 14-year-old curriculum.
That's more than important than $246,000 in here for snow and ice. It's supposed to be global warming. I mean, I would think that we ought to concentrate on revising the elementary school curriculum.
Well, there is some money in there for that, by the way, so the curriculum refresh.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Donnie, Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not here to defend the school department or talk against them, but I think it's only fair to be objective about this. Many of these things we talk about are unfunded mandates, if I'm correct.
Yep.
Special education, that's not driven by us, that's driven by state. Increase of 92 students. And when we send a child out of the area to learn, can you give me an average of a cost per child?
Minimum of 60, maximum of $500,000.
Correct. English second language, too, is that an unfunded mandate also?
Well, partially funded, you get some Title III money, but not enough to pay.
Not enough, increase of 185. So I know you're trying to save money over here and make cuts over here, but certain things are pushed upon you by the government, and it's required, so it's not in your purview to do anything but accept it.
Right, right.
I just want to make that clear.
Which puts us in a position of hard choices. And if you look at, and if you look at the report, the FTEs, most of them have been pairs, and that has been special education.
And one of my big things is special education, too. It's very important that they have a right to learn like everybody else does.
Right.
And the government says, we have to do it, we have to do it.
Right.
We have to find the money to do it. Again, I'm not saying whether I'm in support or not in support, but the issue is there's certain things that we are required to do that cost money.
Right.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Mr. Mazuka?
I don't have much to add to what Dr. Thompson said, other than the committee has been working over the last several months. We built a five-year model based on assumptions that obviously are subject to interpretation. We did bring in a, Tom McQuaid and I brought in a consultant, a gentleman who, named Rob Adelson, who retired about two years ago as the Finance Director for the Town of Lexington, and they've done quite a few overrides, they've done a lot of override modeling over the years. He took a look at our, sort of our model and the numbers we're projecting, and he didn't pass a comment on whether we should or shouldn't have an override, but at least said that our projections appear to be accurate, they appear to be some similar numbers that they would use, and that the projections should hold through. Other than that, I'll just say, I always remind people to take the conversation back, not just to what's going on next year, but where we're going to be in 10 years, where we're going to be in 15 years, and what's the trend of the community, what's the trend of the school department beyond just one day or one year or even a five-year override? Where are we going to be in 10 or 20 years? And the people sitting in these chairs, in those chairs, in a town meeting, and the students sitting in the classrooms 15 or 20 years from now, are they going to say we're making the correct decisions or not? And it's a big community decision, but just think about the long-term impacts of our decision and where we are down the road.
Okay, very good. Just one question. Mr. Slater, I meant to ask you this early. So when we're looking at the, at the projections over the five years, we see budget numbers, anticipated budget numbers, school, general government, and shared costs. Are we, are we saying that we're pretty confident that, particularly in the case of schools and general government, where we have a little more control, that is where we intend to be each year, year over year? The first year, for example, the school says like 9% increase, but then it go down to 3.7, 3.5, 3.3. Is that, do we feel comfortable that we can do that, based on what we know now?
What we know now, yes, these are the numbers that they've given us, and if we have a memorandum of understanding that says that we will live within these numbers, those will, those will be the numbers that they have to live with.
Okay.
They feel comfortable that they can do that.
Okay, so I mean, it's a kind of a case, if you do an override, an operational override, which is not by itself raising taxes, it's raising the levy limit to which, you know, taxes can be raised. The decision to raise the tax, raise taxes and increase budgets is up to town meeting. But if we do that, of course, it's unhappy news, your taxes are going up, but the good news is that, you know, reasonable people behaving reasonably, we can tell you where we're going to go over the next several years. That's what you've gotten out of all this, out of this exercise. Okay, very good. Mr. Donnie, who are you going to hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was wonderful that the in-school department, the concept of facilities management came to be. Mr. McDonough created the original list of what needed to be done. That was a great help to this Board of Selectmen. That was a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful start. Now you have Mr. Rinaldi, who's doing an excellent job in carrying forth, and, I mean, detail, broken railing in the ball school, things like that. That's what we need. It's a good idea for all of the town buildings, but that would be one person or two people in my idea. I don't think we have to create a whole department. So that's, that would be, you know, that's another way that these numbers are movable.
Mr. Bishop? Just a rebuttal on that. An example, we're spending probably close to over a million dollars in St. Gabriel's Chapel. If we had a facilities director and a facilities team over the years, they could look at these buildings, they would not have to wait until ready to fall down to fix them. Preventive maintenance is the name of the game, and that's how we save money over the long term. I was very much in favor of that.
Yeah, I mean, one of the factors in the facilities department is that the facilities department will have a budget, you know, to do things, because unfortunately, you know, you may have a certain amount of money associated with the DPW, is an example, a certain amount of money associated with the rec department, you know, in their budgets. And if they don't need it, it can't be transferred, you know, to one of those other departments. And the intent is to have a pool of money available, you know, in the facilities department. So if there's, you know, a broken water main at the senior center, they could use that money to do that. If there's, you know, a problem in the kitchen in the ball school, they can use that money, you know, for that, for that item, without having to go back to the town meeting, they can hit it right then and there, you know, when it's most critical.
I talked to Mr. Patty about this at length, and I, one thing I did object to, but I understand the need, is that we're doing it now at this point in this juncture in our financial situation. If it had, it should have happened 10 years ago, or maybe now it should happen a couple of years in the future, but nonetheless, it's a good thing. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Just, Mr. Slater, briefly, Mr. McQuaid can help us here, too. So what we're talking about here is a proposed increase in the levy limit, okay, of 5.9, roughly $6 million. The levy limit today is about $75 million, Mr. McQuaid?
Yeah.
Okay. So what we would be proposing in fiscal 2020 is, or what is, what would happen if we, if voters approve this override, is you anticipate the usual 2.5% plus new growth increase in the levy limit, which is optional, we just do it automatically every year, but we've been doing it for 30 years. And then on top of that would be, would be the override levy limit added.
Correct, yes.
So roughly, if you're at $75 million, you add roughly $2.6 million, figuring roughly $900,000 in new growth, which is slightly more than we had in the most recent year, that's 2.6, plus 5.9, so about 8.6 roughly would be the levy limit next year. So you're looking at, well, it's 8. whatever, it's, it's probably 10, 10.2...
11%.
10, 10 to 11% increase in the levy limit, which might well correspond or translate directly into a 10, 10 point, 10 to 11% increase in tax burden in year one.
Correct.
Thereafter, the plan is it compounds, but only at the 2.5% plus new growth.
Right.
To sort of back on track. Okay, this is what I understand. So, Mr. Howard?
Just, don't forget the revale is going on at present time, too, on top of that. That they're going in the houses to revale.
The other things, questions, if something you would say?
Well, I was going to say a lot of things, I guess, I don't know if you want me to say them now. We started, I said this a little bit last night, we started a year ago, when new manager came into town, to try to address our structural deficit and to find ways to shore up our town's financial situation and be able to increase our bond rating. And we knew it would take a few, likely take a few years, but to get started in doing that, reviewing our financial policies and so forth. And I don't think we can take our eye off that ball. This is what we're trying to do here. We've talked a lot about the schools, and they have the most visible need. But within this whole program, within this whole financial package that's put together and being recommended, is beefing up the town's financial reserves, which is all important, to be able to spend more money on roads, be able to pay for that snow and ice, to be able to increase our reserves, so that we are on sound footing and can do some of these things. We were able to put in the facilities department only because of these new significant changes from the state aid without suffering substantial cuts. The manager had already had to give us, I think, last week's meeting, 1.7 million in recommended cuts. And so it just goes on and gets worse. Bond agencies, at the last time they valued the town, reevaluated the sound, town situation and what our bond rating would be, continued to maintain us at the AA+ rating, but that report was laced with warnings. And the last statement in that report was, we could lower the rating if the town experiences a significant deterioration of budgetary performance, leading to a weakening fund balance of reserves, liquidity constraints. This is intended to try to start addressing that. Without taking some of these actions, we're headed in that, that direction.
And I forget to interrupt, we've been going that way for at least 10 or 12 years.
We have, we've been doing things, and we've been doing things that a lot of towns have had to do to keep going from year to year. But we've gotten to the bottom of the barrel. We no longer, we used to laugh and say, we found a rabbit to pull out of a hat. There's no more rabbits, we're down to the end. And if we don't want to just fix for next year, which has been pointed out to us a couple of times, and a couple of letters to us, that there may be ways to fix this year. But it's been doing what we've been doing the last few years, just fixing it again for one more year, taking it down the road one more year. This is a carefully thought-out plan to stabilize the town's finances, and we just, should just start now, not think about waiting any longer. Ultimately, it's up to the people, what level of services they want, this will have to be put out there, they'll have to determine it. But I think as leaders of the town, we should be trying to shore up the town's finances and show them that this is the way we believe it should be done. The, you know, there's some reference to, you know, overrides and multiple overrides, I think it's been something like 399 overrides, I think it's been 177 different communities. Some of those communities have had over 10 overrides, because that's what they've had to do to keep the level services where they want it. But that's a consensus of the community, of a majority of the community, of what level of services they want. If they didn't want those services, they wouldn't have supported those overrides. I think it's time, I can remember my good friend Mike Lyons, when he sat on this board five or six years ago on the Budget Balancing Committee, he ended up at this table, saying that we've gotten to the point where we need a good sit-down discussion and debate over where we want this town to be, whether we want our property values going up like some of the nicer communities in the state, or whether we want to see them drop and services drop like some of the less fortunate communities in the state. And this, I think, we've come to the junction, I really believe we've come to the junction when we need to have that debate stop talking, but we should have it. And ultimately, the people decide. I've been a member of this committee, I didn't dig into the numbers like I do a lot, but I've reviewed them, studied them, spoken to those staff people who have put them together, and I'm very confident that this is sound for the town, and I am confident that this is the right time to at least have the discussion and let the townspeople decide. Thank you.
Very good, Mr. Plasko. I do, I have one other line of question, if that's okay, Mr. Slater. We did talk at Budget Balancing a little bit about timing, timeline and timing, and do we have any specific recommendations or general recommendations on when we should do this?
The Budget Balancing Committee voted that an override should go on the ballot prior to June 10th. They weren't any more specific than that in the vote.
Okay. Prior to June 10th, we have five, five months remaining in the fiscal year.
Yeah.
That would be after annual town meeting.
Right.
The annual convenes on May 13th.
Right, you know, again, it was just no later than, I mean, as an example, if you wanted to do April 1, you know, which is the same day as the town election is, that there would be enough time to do that also, that was to be your choice.
Okay. And we, whatever, if we do decide that we want to put this on the ballot, Mr. Plasko, you and I talked, it's going to be, we have to notify the clerk 35 days?
35 days before any election, which would mean you'd have to, depending on when we would meet, at least have a few days for the board to meet a notifier. So somewhere between 35 and 40 days.
Okay, very good. So April, so if you, if you, if you wanted to put this on the ballot April 1, which is the date of our annual town election, which is a Monday, we would have to have, we'd have to notify the town clerk by roughly February 22nd, which is...
Yeah, I think, I think the last meeting is, at least as far as scheduled meetings, is February...
26.
Calls for 35 days.
19th and then 26th.
Right.
Okay. Pretty sure we not have a full board on the 12th and 19th, I think we have a full board if we're going to vote to do that in April. If we, if we do it in June or late April, anywhere from late April to June, we have more time.
Correct.
This board has more time to, to decide what to do. All right, very good. Mr. Bishop?
One quick thing on that. It also gives us time to vet this with the general public, too. I know Mr. Mazuka had a public discussion at the high school, maybe back in November or so, explaining to people what this is. But it wasn't fully attended by everybody in the town. I want, I know people from the school side are going to be there. I want to hear from the people who are marginally employed, that live paycheck to paycheck. I want to hear from the elderly community. I don't want any complaints... I don't want any complaints later on that, "Well, nobody told me this." I want this thing vetted as much as we can. So when they all the polls, everybody totally understands what this is. And perhaps Plan B if it doesn't work, if it doesn't pass, what all of it means today.
Agreed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just, just one of the things on my mind though, you know, I, I looked at, we're talking about free cash used to the budget and how it's an indicator of, generally considered an indicator of ill health, you know, perhaps a little, it's not a great practice. I can tell you, I was at the Mass Municipal Association Conference last weekend. Sean Cronin of the Division of Local Services at the Finance Commission presentation said unequivocally, "Do not," he said, "You do not use free cash to balance your operating budget." Now, a lot of towns do, but I've noticed in fiscal 2019, I look at 25 different towns on their recap sheet, 21 of them use zero dollars for free cash. Now, there's a lot of sleight of hand that can go into that. You know, we use 1.266 million. That's what shows up on the, on the recap sheet. Perhaps we're being more honest about what we do than some of these other communities, because it's, it's easy to take something like, Dr. Thompson was chuckling a little while ago about prepaying special education tuition. Well, you could do that and it's, it's considered a special purpose use of free cash, not an operation, but it's really going into a budget we already know exists. And if it becomes a habit, well, might as well just call it free cash for operating budget. But I just wanted to, to let you know that. You can look it up yourself on the Gateway website.
Yeah, I mean, all, all told for fiscal 19, I believe we used $1,840,000 approximately in free cash, which was much more than we, we generally do, you know, in a given year. This year, because we had such a low free cash number, there was simply no free cash available to use for the budget.
You know, a lot of the things we've been trying to do in the last five years, we've actually done pretty well. You know, we've found revenue streams and better performance, rate, rate increases and better performance at, say, the recreation department, cemetery department. We passed that local option meal tax in 2012. And we have sort of gotten the, the debt service to plateau as, and gone, that gone down as a percentage of the overall budget. The use of free cash in our overall budget has actually gone down as a percentage of the budget, but, but it's getting to this last part, and it has been at the expense of, of a very important department in the town. So I'd love to stay on that path, but, but, you know, we have to, we have to look at the reality long and hard too.
Right. I mean, the, the Finance Commission, you know, has, has believed for a long time that we should spend free cash more on some of the one-time items that we unfortunately had to borrow money for, which has increased our, you know, our credit card, you know, principal and interest, you know, things like equipment is an example. But in the last couple of years, you know, we've been spending free cash, you know, when we've had it, more on those one-time items. And last year, we spent 1.7 million dollars of free cash in the new municipal accounting system.
Yeah.
You know, so we don't have to pay for that over the next, you know, 10 or 20 years. So the, a healthy free cash balance is certainly something valuable to the town.
The other thing, it's one of the things I want to go to study, but the, the couple of other things that we've been done in the last four years, one, this, this OPEB thing, which is really, it's an acronym for Other Post-Employment Benefits, basically Health Insurance for Retirees. This thing is gonna explode statewide because of the changes in GASP rules, trying to put some money into annual appropriation to roads beyond the Chapter 90 appropriation. We've been trying to do that and we have been able to do that. Increase in the appropriation for snow and ice. A lot of the, a lot of the good practices we have been enacting, but, but, you know, in spite of our best efforts, it's possible, we just need to boost a shot of revenue here. So, and it was done.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We go through life and we try to keep learning. Going to all these Budget Balancing Committee meetings since last summer has been a huge education for me, even though I've been in government a long time. And some of the things that have come up in my mind, you know, based on the discussion here this evening as well, this concept in regard to budgets cuts. Now, that's a very interesting concept, because someone submits, a department submits a budget, not just the school department, but any town budget, and it has things in it. Some of those costs are real, some of those costs are add-ons. And so then the concept, "I had to cut," that's an interesting concept. Then the other concept, levels of services. What do we have here in Norwood? We have an excellent public works department, excellent police and fire department, we have excellent light department, we have excellent water from the MWRA, and we have all of these wonderful levels. We have really good roads in Norwood, and we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on roads every year. And, and so this concept of, of levels of services also is an interesting concept to me. We have a new public works department, new police and fire station, we're working on the new light station. We have to take care of the middle school. We have to face that, because to spend $8 million on an old building for the AA is silly and portable classrooms that are, that are deteriorating, disintegrating. So a new school, a new, we have to do that. And that's going to cost us, what, $40 million?
Probably a little more after this date reverses.
Maybe a little bit more than $40 million, but that's coming very soon too, you know? So, so we have to, we have to really do some hard thinking here.
Thank you, Mrs. Donnie.
Plasko, I was gonna add to that. We have to do that hard thinking, we have to look at these situations and they're a tough place to be, but we're not alone. I've got three or four different towns' histories here and their, their committees that they have to look at their budgets and a couple of newspaper articles, Crafton, Brookline, at the exact same time they were considering doing a three to a five-year budget to stabilize their situation, to reset the table, as I call it, and give a little boost, as Chairman just mentioned. They were looking at one, if not two, in some towns' case, two schools overrides at the same time. And this is just a common thing, it's not unique to Norwood. It's a fact of life, we have to deal with our answer, won't necessarily be the same as these other towns, but there's nothing unique about this. I was reading an article about Crafton and I thought I was reading about Norwood. Theirs was about four years ago, but it was exactly what we're talking about right now on both the school and general government side. So it's very interesting. That doesn't mean anything, it's a little way to do.
I thought it was very good, Mr. Plasko. All right, well, let's, Mr. Bishop?
Mr. Maloney, if I could, if you don't mind, I'd just like to, Mr. Plasko just reminded me of something. Mr. Slater mentioned that the cherry sheet from the governor was, had really good news for Norwood and that we came out with a larger increase than many surrounding communities. But in those packets that Dr. Thompson gave you, there's a link to the website from the state and some quotes from what the governor is listed on the information sheet with the governor's cherry sheet, talking about why there were certain increases in the cherry sheet and particularly in Chapter 70 financing. And as Mr. Plasko was saying, our situation is not unique in Norwood. And, and this is something that the governor is recognizing statewide and, but in particular, he has pointed out the need for, as Dr. Thompson mentioned, the need for additional mental health services, that that's a, a constant issue statewide. But in particular, the expense of, of educating English language learners, that's a mandated thing. And in the last 10 years, we have had the number of English language learners in our schools more than doubled. And that doesn't even include other students who English is not their first language. There are even more students who English is not their first language. These are students whose English skills are not sufficient to, are, are low enough that need, they need additional support from the schools, and they are legally required to have that additional support from the schools.
Would you be kind enough just to tell us, I know it's maybe we're getting a little off topic, but how does that, if a new English language learner student comes into the system, what does that mean in terms of people and money to the system?
We are, now I'm getting outside of my area of expertise here, but so I may pass it over to Dr. Thompson, but it does, we are required to do an assessment within a certain amount of time, and then based on the results of the tests, they are placed into different levels. And for the students who are at lower levels, they are, we are obligated to provide a certain level of service for them. Sometimes that means pulling them outside of the classroom, outside of the general classroom to service them. And then as students progress and their English skills improve, they don't, the next step is that they get some additional support within the classroom, or sometimes it's not actually happening in the classroom, but they're doing most of their learning in the classroom and just getting some additional support.
So is it fair to say, if you have to pull a student out of the classroom for that reason or any other, that student becomes more expensive to educate?
Significantly.
Okay.
So you do, if there are, there's six levels. If they're Level 1 and Level 2, they can get up to four hours of direct instruction from a certified English, English language learning teacher.
And the system pays for that in total?
Right, and there is some federal reimbursement. It, nowhere, it's, nowhere near comes close, so it is. You know, but the other piece, and this, this comes down to, you know, penny wise and pound foolish, if you have a young child who scores low and you maximize that time with them when they're younger, they move out of the system faster and you save money over the long run.
Okay.
Okay, but that's a staff.
But you gotta make that investment.
But you have to make that investment.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
Just I, I, it strikes me, this conversation goes back a little bit to the question that Slugman Howard had at the earlier part of why these additions of FTEs come in. Last year in the school committee and this year as well, we've been looking at our ELL teachers, because depending on where those students score, they are mandated to receive a certain amount of time with that English language learner, with that, with that teacher. And with the caseloads that our teachers were having, and some of them were having to split, you know, amongst different buildings, we weren't able to give that level of service that was required. So additional staffing was needed to meet that legal mandate for what those students are required to have. And something to remember is, these are students who aren't understanding what's going on around them. These are students who, for that reason, may feel quite vulnerable and quite alone. So giving that extra funds, we're, we're sort of looking out for the, the most vulnerable amongst our, our students in a lot of ways. So that's, just speaking to that question that Slugman Howard had, I think this is a good illustration of that fact.
Okay, thank you very much. Mrs. Donnie?
Thank you. A large part of the students are young, aren't they, in the elementary level?
Right now, yes. There were 90, 90 moved in last August in kindergarten and first grade.
And, and since they're young, they'll only take maybe, what, one year or two years to learn at the most? At the most?
Yeah, usually, usually three, but it depends on, depends on the kid, it depends on what else is in the background as well.
Right. I think the kids learn with very, very, very fast.
The younger they are, the faster they pick up the language.
And here's another interesting thing, without the state mandate, right? That's been going on in public education since the history of public education. Because we have documented, Norwood Historical Society at the Day House has all the documentation about the nationalities in the Norwood public school system, you know, 100 years ago. So this is, it's only the state that makes it expensive.
Well, it's also, it's also the expectations. All, all those children have to pass an MCAS test to get a high school diploma.
Sure, but they learn by the time they're in the third grade.
Except some of the students who are English language learners come to us in high school. They, they come in with, maybe not that many, but there are certainly students who come in to our high school without sufficient English language skills to take the MCAS tests.
Select me, Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Thompson, if you know the answer, I'm sure you do, and I'm gonna pick on the Ball School for instance, because there's a lot of different, there are a lot of classifications down there. What percentage of students use English as a second language?
Ball School? I, I don't have, I don't have the Bye School piece, but I can tell you, right, the spreadsheet that I gave you, the first language not English in, in the district, out of 3,400 students, is 788.
But that sounds so bad, really.
About 20%.
No, more than 20%.
And some of those people are the only English speakers in their family, their parents don't speak English.
Yes, yes.
So it's kind of a problem there.
And, and, and some come from countries where they haven't even had formal education.
And again, a lot of it, not all of it, is pushed by the state, it's a requirement.
Yep.
We have to pick up the tab on funding mandates, yeah.
Yeah. But, you know, I mean, the good news is, is that we have great people. There you go. I have to hold that here. So, um. Oh, so the Ball, Ball EL, English language learner is 35.5%? Yeah. Yeah. So English, first language not English, 35.1 of the Ball's English language learners is 22%. This is 1718, not this current year. Economically disadvantaged, 36.5%. And special education is 20.9.
Attending a lot of the awards ceremonies, either the Tony Awards, you know, its scholarship awards, it's a beautiful thing to see the number of students who have more than one language. The English might be their second language, and they're excelling.
Right.
In, in your good school system.
Yeah.
They excel.
I, I wholeheartedly agree, and the work that happens at the Ball's is truly amazing work that those people do out there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Mr. Plasko?
Hi, I don't know if it's too early if there's more discussion, but we've had quite a bit of discussion. I don't think, want to see this board, at least at this time, take a position on whether there should, shouldn't be an, should or should be an override passed, but I think we should pass a motion or I would make a motion and hope it would pass, that we accept the recommendation of the Townwide Budget Balancing Committee, that we should have a community discussion over the need for, whether or not there's a need for an override and support putting an override on a ballot at a future time to be discussed at next week's meeting.
Second. Okay, did everyone hear that?
Yes. I understand it's another thing.
What did he say? I'll get you up with you later. All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Howard. And again, Mr. Plasko, just that we are endorsing the.
Endorsing, endorsing that there will be an override and will determine the method and time of it. Not, not necessarily supporting the override, supporting that there will be an override.
Putting it on the ballot.
Excuse me, your language said endorsing an override. We have to improve that language.
I said not endorsing.
Could you please reword the motion?
Please.
Intent is.
To discuss.
Order selection.
To discuss, a community discussion.
Accept the recommendation, Townwide Budget Balancing Committee, to put an override question or questions on a future ballot before the town's group.
Made, seconded. Is there anything further on Mr. Plasko's motion?
No, sir.
Hearing done, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right, so, so then for practical purposes, then, Mr. Plasko, we take this up again next week?
Well, next week would be important if we want a full board present and we want to call it for April 1st as part of the town election.
Okay.
If we were going to think that to call it some other time, I would think the sooner the better for the whole town, so they can be a good discussion, but legally, we would have more time to consider an alternate date for that.
Okay.
So we should at least have further discussion next week, is my recommendation.
Okay, so possibly then next week, we have a discussion here amongst ourselves and possibly we entertain a motion to, for a specific date to put this on the, on the ballot. Fair? Possibly. Okay. All right, very good. I, I want to personally thank all of you for coming in again. I know you spent an hour here in front of us answering questions, we appreciate it. We got sort of pretty deep into school policy, school statistics, but it is helpful to us, as you, as you can imagine, and to anybody watching on TV. This might be the most highly rated faculty we've ever had. Mr. Mizuko, thanks.
Just like last week's football game, right?
That's right, yeah. And we also, by the way, Dr. Thompson, before I recognize you, I'd also recognize that we have some friends who came down, who have sat here for two hours to view this meeting. I recognize some friends from the marching band here, parents and students from the, from the high school, and thank you for taking time to join us. It's a great civic exercise. So, Dr. You have your.
Yeah, and I know that I just dropped this in people's laps tonight. We did unveil it yesterday, but if there are questions, more than I can say with any member of the board.
Thank you for all the help.
Thank you for the offer, we appreciate that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, so, Mr. Bishop?
I know a lot of people came here tonight expecting that we were gonna make a vote one way or the other, but I think it's, it come upon us to go over all the information, study it, so we have an informed decision to make in the near future.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, very good. All right, very good. You all set over there?
We have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we're all set here then? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Let's see. Selectmen's agenda. All right, very good. Selectmen's agenda. Mr. Bishop, if you just give it one second.
Yeah, whenever you're ready.
All right. So what we're going to now, Mr. Mizuka, we've already had a conversation with you. You're all set over there. And, all right, so we'll move on to the last item, the last section of our meeting, which is selectmen's agenda. And we will start this evening with Mr. Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one quick item. As you remember, the both of us were at the concerts, winter concerts on Sunday at the Norwood High School. And at the conclusion, two ladies spoke to the chairman and I about an issue on Berwick Street. And this is relative to when the high school breaks. Everybody's in a hurry to get out of there, apparently. And they come down the exit ramp from the high school, go halfway around the rotary on Nickel Street, and at an unreasonable amount of speed, head out towards Walpole Street on Berwick. And the concern was, there's young people walking, leaving the school, and there's vehicles from the school going at a high rate of speed. So I would ask if you could get in touch with the police department, work out something so we can monitor that problem and stop it before it gets any worse. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Mr. Bishop, is that all? You all set?
That's it.
All right, Mr. Howard?
That's easy.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mizuka, I had asked a while back about the possibility of maybe us making some money with landscapers, that if we allowed landscapers to dump leaves and grass only up at our recycling area, for a fee, of course. I thought, I haven't heard back from you, but I thought that thing would be an excellent thing to start in the spring, especially if we could. To me, it's no harm, no foul, because we'd just get more dirt out of the thing, and then we could sell the dirt back to them, maybe even. But just a thought, not putting, you know, wood and stuff like that, just grass and leaves only. I think we could make a few bucks from these guys.
Yeah, we, you know, Mark and I sat down and looked at that. We're not really sure that any revenue we could generate would really be worth the effort and the time we have to put in. There's a lot of different ways the town could generate revenue, but how much effort do we put in to generate $500 or $1,000 a year? We can certainly...
I think it'd be way more than that myself.
We don't really think there'd be that much revenue involved in it. And then if it could add to staff costs, what is it going to add to it? And then we've got to monitor, we can really only take waste from in the town. Anytime you're doing collections from something that's out of the town, it actually changes your DEP regulations. That becomes complicated. So then we'd have to verify, is it only a Norwood truck? Is it only a Norwood business? Is it only dumping leaves from Norwood? Again, we can do a deeper dive if you want, but we looked at it and just the complexity of it. It doesn't look like it would generate any net surplus for the town.
Cool. Thank you. Mr. Donnie?
In that regard, I can see, uh, green stops, branches, aspiration to grind them up a nightmare.
No, no, no.
Is there a program, Mr. Don?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
No, I'm not.
Mr. Donnie?
No agenda tonight, thank you.
Mr. Plasko?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I forgot him last time.
Boston Skating Club, they're moving along with their plans to come to Norwood very quickly.
Sweet.
We already have a signed pilot agreement with them. And part of that pilot agreement is that we will vigorously, or whatever words we use, advocate to get them a license.
Okay.
I would be willing to accept the responsibility if the board still authorizes to speak with Representative Rogers's office and make sure we have the proper wording and timing. Last time we went to get some licenses, there was a little problem. The chairman of the committee didn't like the way things were worded and what we were doing. So we can just make sure we have our i's dotted and t's crossed so that if we go to town meeting and they approve such an action and we file it, it's in the form that we should get speedy approval of.
Okay.
Is there a license available now?
There's one for, none on the table in this office, on the shelf, if you will. I know I get the MLS listing every morning, and one of my things I do before I start my day. And I know there is one actively being marketed now.
Sam, Louis?
I'm not sure of the establishment, but there's one being actively pushed now, at least one. And whatever's happening with the Outback license, it's still out there. So there might be two, at least, that are out there. And actually, I advise them of that so that they would be aware. I don't know if they're pursuing that enough, but I did pass that information along to the director.
That would be a lot faster.
The other item, another item I have is I was also contacted by the MII, the Medical Marijuana Firm, that will be opening in Norwood. They've got their final...
MIM.
MIM, small modification that they needed from the zoning board was approved, I guess a couple weeks ago at this point. And they're getting bids from contractors to do the work in their facility. And they're actually expecting to be up and operating by May, possibly due. Just piece of information to pass along. Third thing is I want to remember, remind the public that our town election's coming up. It will be April 1. Need to get signatures if you're seeking office within the next couple of weeks. What's that deadline?
February 11.
February 11. Thank you. And there's two vacancies, I'm told, meaning that there's two incumbents who will not be running for reelection on the library trustees. Two incumbents on the Board of Selectmen are seeking reelection. I wish people on these boards would make a declaration of their candidacy so that people know that there's vacancies in particular. And particularly in the case of the library, I'd encourage anyone with any interest whatsoever to consider getting nomination papers and running for that vacant, those vacant positions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Mr. Plasko, thank you very much. For me, just want to remind my colleagues, please take a look at Mr. Mizuka's self-evaluation and complete your individual evaluation of his performance. We'll try to get that done by next week, please, if he can. I want to also thank our friends again for coming in tonight, students and parents who took their time to sit here for a few hours and watch our meeting. Thank you very much. And, let's see, I think that's about it, right?
Motion to adjourn.
And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you and good night.